Welcome to this week's St. Clair County Board of Commissioners meeting. The types of business that occur at these meetings include public hearings, official voting on actions by the Board of Commissioners, presentations by departments of the county, and recognition of service that makes our county great. As your elected representatives, the St. Clair County Board of Commissioners is committed to improving the lives of all our residents while preparing county government to meet the demands of the future. In order to do that, we need to share our thoughts and plans with you. More importantly, we need you to share your thoughts, concerns, and opinions with us. We encourage you to come and experience the process by attending any of these meetings. They occur every first and third Thursday of the month at 6:00 PM at the St. Clair County Administration Building at 200 Grand River Avenue in Port Huron.
The first thing we're going to do tonight is to have a public hearing on the proposed 2015 budget, so at this time I will declare that meeting open, and I will ask if anybody would like to address the Board regarding the 2015 budget. Any citizens or anybody wishing to address the Board? One time? Anybody wishing to address the Board a second time? Anybody wishing to address the Board for the third time? Hearing none, seeing none, we'll declare that meeting closed, and we will now open the St. Clair County Board of Commissioners Judiciary and Public Safety Committee meeting. If the clerk would take the role, please.
Commissioner Samasco.
Here.
Commissioner Tamian.
Here.
Commissioner Heideman.
Here.
Commissioner Bone.
Here.
Commissioner Riley.
Here.
Commissioner Rushing.
Here.
Commissioner Greathouse.
Here. Stand for the pledge, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Any additions or deletions to the agenda?
I move the approval of the agenda as presented. Support?
Motion and support, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Reopposed. Any citizens who wish to address the Judiciary and Public Safety Committee tonight? Hearing none, seeing none, conceptual initiatives from administration? Nothing. We have no old business, under new business, item 7A is the Clemis update. If I could just beg your indulgence for a couple of minutes, I want to introduce a few people who are in the audience. We're going to present as much information as we can so that the commissioners and the public know what we're talking about, and we have a lot of people in the audience who will probably be able to answer your questions. So if you would just be recognized, as I call you, Jamie Hessweyer, Jamie. Jamie is with Clemis, he's the managing boss director, he's the manager, but he's the guy out there at Clemis. Mike Reeves from Port Huron Public Safety is here. Mike has used Clemis before for 25, 27 years, I think, Mike, so he has some input. Tom Konik is here from Marysville as the public safety guy and onboard, been working on this Clemis thing all along. Jim Heslip is not here, is he? I was hoping he would get here from Marine City, it's the only entity in St. Clark County that is currently using Clemis, and I was hoping he would be here for some input, he may come in. Tim Congress here from Central Dispatch, Tim, thank you for being here. Tiffany, where are you Tiffany? Way in the back, back there. Tiffany Fornier is our IT director and would be working closely with that. Lieutenant Matt Paulus has been working on Clemis for well over, what, two months? Three months steady? Two years, two years part-time and a month steady, something like that. And Tom Buckley from the undersheriff, Tom, if it's okay with you, Jamie, we'll start with Tom Buckley. The sheriff is here too, but I don't believe the sheriff, Tim Donlin, is going to address us, I think Tim is, or Tom.
It's a very good beginning with the undersheriff.
All right, Tom, why don't you start and fill the commissioners in on where we are, what's going on, what you need from there.
Okay, thank you.
Can you do it in two minutes?
I'll do my best. Probably not, but.
All right, that is good, yeah.
Thank you. First off, I'd like to thank a lot of those people, in fact, all those people that you introduced, because this is, as you're going to see, a really large project with a lot of facets and a lot of tentacles, and really, no one person could do it. Matt Paulus has been working diligently, he's been working on it two years, he's been assigned strictly working on Clemis all of October and half of September, so he's been working on it really hard to try and get it to where we're at today. Each of you received an email today from Chris Morris, it was information that I provided, kind of starting back in 2004 with the timeline and then progressing through where we're at today, and then some of the financials that I've gone over with Dina. Dina's not here, she should also be thanked because she's been working really hard trying to get all the financials in order, so that we know dollars and cents wise where we're at. As you can see, back in 2004, with the help of a grant, we purchased a records management and CAD system from the Visionaire company. When it came, it was an adequate system, to be kind, I guess. It was not very user-friendly, had a lot of modules and apps that we thought we could use, they never came to fruition, they never really worked. I can tell you personally that when you use that system that we've had for 10 years now, if you don't do something or one aspect of it for a week or two, you almost have to retrain yourself, it's kind of the old adage, you take a week's vacation, now you gotta get retrained, retrained. If you actually don't do certain parts of it, it's very hard to go back and figure out how you need to get there. Training was not very good with the system, so a lot of the things that we should have been able to do, we were not able to do. It's also, does not have a large footprint in Michigan, Visionaire is now owned by Tri-Tec, they bought the company a few years ago, but since they don't have a lot of Michigan companies, they don't keep up with a lot of Michigan standards, they're kind of slow to react to our changes here. Fast forward kind of to 2010, during that area, we started looking at different systems, we realized that both us and Port Huron PD who uses Visionaire, that this system really isn't working, so we began looking at other RMS systems out there. We found that there were a lot of efficiencies and a lot of improvements in some of the systems, and that our system in 2010 was reaching end of life. We got a lot of information from then Visionaire, now Tri-Tec, that they were not going to support a lot of the software that we're using now, so we were going to have a hard time if we had a, if something went down, we're not going to get the support that we needed. So in '11, St. Clark County and Port Huron issued a joint request for proposals on CAD and RMS. We received quite a few, we picked three of the top proposals that came in, we really researched those, drilled down and took a good look at them. We found a lot of, a lot of good, there were a lot of good programs out there, there's no doubt about it, however, they all came with at least a million dollar price tag. When you start rolling in CAD, computer aided dispatch, RMS, and a lot of the things that we really wanted to do to do our jobs well and be efficient, we're looking at at least a million dollars, and then maintenance costs every year of at least $200,000 to maintain those products. So it was very clear, I don't have to tell anybody here, that we didn't have that kind of money, nobody did, so we're not going to be able to do that. That kind of led us to going around the state and looking at different programs. In '11 and '12, we really took those two years to kind of go around and look at everything that was out there, every possibility, and we even kind of got down to piecemealing systems together, we would maybe buy a CAD from this vendor, an RMS from this vendor, maybe a field-based reporting module from this vendor. It was kind of the only way financially that we might be able to do it, but it just doesn't work. Systems don't work well together if they're not designed to work together. So in 2013, we started looking at Clemis. Clemis has been, and Jamie here will certainly be able to give you a lot more information on how Clemis started and what they are than I will, but it's a large consortium, there's 100, over 100 now? Agencies? Over 100 police agencies using Clemis in southeast Michigan, all of Oakland County, all of Washtenaw County, most of Wayne, a lot of Macomb, and pretty soon, hopefully, St. Clair and LaPierre will be using it. So through those two years and with Chief Reeves and Sheriff and Matt Paulus, we've really looked at a lot of things, but after looking at all that, we really think that Clemis is the right solution for us now. Going into the next section, kind of what is Clemis? There's a quote from their website, it says, "Clemis is a multifaceted regional law enforcement information management system and more." So you know, kind of a nice way to wrap it up, but to say it's just an RMS system does not do it justice, it's so much more. It provides computer aided dispatch, mobile data computers, lean access, electronic citations and crash reports, and please, if anybody has any questions about whatever any of this stuff is, please stop me, feel free to stop me. Evidence and property management, which is something we don't have now, we have a standalone computer in our evidence room that we log evidence in and kind of keep track of where it's at, but it's a very archaic system, it does not work well. We spend a lot of man-hours logging in things, making sure they're at where they're at, where they're supposed to be, and then trying to find them later on down the road. Auto impound management, which we don't have a very good system now, it's a, you know, we're using a lot of 3x5 cards and trying to log into where, keep autos that are impounded logged in so we know where they're at. Crime mapping, which we don't do now. Intelligence-led policing through crime reports, that's something that we don't know we really need to. Right now, with the systems we have, we cannot go in and draw out reports that show us really where, what our crime patterns are, where they're happening. Wasn't that long ago, we were using pushpins on a map to try and track where things were happening, and now we're not much further ahead than that. Online citizen reporting, which we don't do now, and biometric identification, which is something that's, I think, really important for this area, given that we're a border community. What biometric identification is, amongst other things, Clemis has what kind of looks like, it's hard to describe, maybe a remote control size, a TV roll control size box that an officer on the road can use to take a fingerprint from somebody that they can't identify, if they don't have any driver's license or identification with them. They can use that system to fingerprint somebody, it goes back to the car, goes to Clemis, and within a few minutes, Jamie? Within a few minutes, we can get a positive identification through the state and federal system as to who that person is. We looked at purchasing that system through a grant a couple of years ago, and that system alone was about a quarter of a million dollars to purchase and then 25,000, 30,000 a year to maintain. That comes with Clemis, there's no extra cost for something like that.
Tom, let me jump in for just a second here, all of those pieces you just read, does all of that come with the basic package when you buy, when you buy into Clemis, or are some of these options?
When we buy the records management system, we will get almost everything there. We're kind of breaking new ground a little bit with Clemis, we're a different animal because of the way we run, we have a central dispatch and multiple agencies using that dispatch, so they've been able to adapt their pricing a little bit for what we have. Everything as far as lean access, electronic crash reports, evidence management, I guess everything except the mobile data computers is, comes in the basic price. There is a separate price set aside for what it costs to maintain the mobile data computers.
I just want these guys to be aware that there are going to be some additional pieces that you can buy as options.
Yes.
Later on, but we're looking at what the basic package is going to give us.
Individual unit that'll do the fingerprints, how many units are there going to be? You said it's going to be out there, are you going to bring the person in to a, well, you're only getting one, are you going to have numerous of them on patrol cars?
Well, that will depend on a couple of things. Number one, the availability of the units, Clemis has several, I don't know how many purchased, can you tell me, Jamie?
Almost 200 in the field now. Because I, that's just going to be part of the cost, if you're going to want to put it in your patrol cars as an option for, you'll pick your areas, we may want to have a more potentially using that option, whatever those costs are, so just concern as you go forward.
Yeah, well, there's 200 in service, they're distributed out amongst the agencies that are members of Clemis. They give them out on an as-needed basis. I think we're going to show a great need for them, we may be able to get more. We may, down the road, if there's a need and there's an ability, we could purchase more. The big cost comes in purchasing the system so that you have it. The units themselves are relatively inexpensive, we could possibly purchase more if need be, but I feel confident that Clemis will be able to provide us what we need. If we have three or four of them out on the road at any given time, it's much faster than trying to take somebody back to the station, and a lot of times you legally can't take somebody back to the station if they don't want to go simply because of identification purposes. We could transport that unit to wherever the person stops, so, like I said, being along the border, we do come in contact with quite a few people who don't have identification, we need to identify them. There's a lot of advantages to being a member of Clemis. One of the big ones that I see is information sharing. Once we're a member and we're on the system, we essentially have access to the database of every police agency that is a member of Clemis. When we do a search for a suspect or somebody we have in custody, we get to see essentially what they've been involved in in all of southeast Michigan. And that's important because we're becoming really a mobile society, we're already there, and the criminals that we're coming in contact with don't just operate in St. Clair or Macomb County, they're operating across Michigan, a lot of southeast Michigan. So all that information is right there at our fingertips. Another thing is that it is truly a consortium, where we become a member, we'll have say as to what direction Clemis is going. If we have issues or a certain aspect of the program that we would like to see changed, we'll have a seat at the table, we'll be able to discuss that with Clemis and possibly make the change. And so far, they've been very receptive to any issues or questions that we've had, any changes we'd like to make, even though we're not members yet. They're also, they're not a vendor, they're not in it to make a profit. Clemis is driven at giving the best product out there for law enforcement. They take the membership fees, they have a staff that will update and make changes to the system, but it's not somebody that we're, that we're having to go to and ask for a change, that we have to wait six months for the next update to come through. They really, they look at down the road, and I think that's evidenced by, they had a, the CAD system that they had for many years was one that had been purchased and that they adopted as their own, they saw that it wasn't functional, their staff went through and built a CAD system from the ground up. It's in the testing stages now, it's one of the reasons that we probably won't go to it for a few months, but it's revolutionary CAD system as far as the fact that they built it from the ground up is concerned. And that system is being given to all of their members, it's an upgrade that's going to come with it, it's not going to cost them anything. So that's what we're looking forward to down the road, when things change, we're not going to have to come up with another half a million dollars to try and get the upgrade that comes along with, with the changes that are made. A few of the advantages we can see right now, number one is field-based reporting. Currently, the officer in the car has no way to do their reports in the car. We're about four weeks behind in typing, the officer dictates a report, turns it in, waits for the typist to type, but we're about four weeks behind right now, and many of those jobs that we call them, the dictations are only a few minutes long, officers could type those in the car if they had the ability, they don't have that, they will with Clemis.
Tom, let me jump in just a second, when I was talking to Jamie, I thought that we had talked also that there are some templates that are in there, four, three or four different crimes that are in there so that they type up even faster, no?
And they recommend a system? Yeah, and one thing I want to point out is that.
Jump up there, Jamie. That way everybody can hear you.
Thank you.
Real quick, he had mentioned Renata Vender, I work for Oakland County, I'm a county employee for the county of Oakland, and I'm a manager of a division at the Department of Information Technology. And one thing that we're lucky enough to have, what the undersheriff is describing here, is that we actually started in 1968 with three, three PDs in Oakland County, getting with the Oakland County Department, the data processing as computers were called then, and we've worked and evolved and built systems and grew to the point where we're able to have all this functionality that the undersheriff mentioned at the cost we are. And you don't, you're not buying the records management system, and you're not buying any software. You join and become a member, and you're using software that we've developed, or we've purchased and provide out to the users, and most of it we've developed ourselves because we are an IT department with programmers that then is allowed to use. And we've been able to be very fortunate with grant acquisitions, because when we go for a grant, or agencies go for a grant, when they give grants, they're benefiting multi-counties, multi-agencies, and the awards are theirs, so we've been able to really fund a lot of those efforts as well. And as the undersheriff said, when you join, you're not just a member, you're a partner. And real quickly, just to give an example, and I gotta say it because it's, it just explains how things work with us. We actually had five or six PDs come to us about two, two and a half years ago, the crime mapping that the undersheriff mentioned. Each one of them had money to do crime mapping, crime analysis for their own department. They all came to us, we had a meeting, they said, "We've all talked, we'd all like to give you our money." And it totaled about $165,000 if my memory serves me, if you'll provide crime mapping and a crime analysis system for all the members as part of the membership. Now, the project ended up costing, I think, about maybe 325 or 350,000 dollars, but it still funded almost half of it. So the only thing they asked was, can we be first? And can we be part of, how are you going to lay out some of the screens? Other than that, they didn't ask for anything special, and they provided the money. And that's the way we partner all the time, we have agencies that will provide us some temporary staff for a month or two to assist in, in training other agencies and things, so it's truly, it's truly a partnership once you become a member. And because we've been doing it so long, since 68, all the way through, I mean, but it took a long time. It was 1984 before we actually had a database, Oakland County-wide database, that all the police departments came up with a common paper report that then they used, so then records clerks could key into a common database. At that point, we just grew beyond records management system to computer aided dispatch, to mobile data computers, to regional mug shots, which is electronic images, to live scans, and then we started going outside the county, and as the undersheriff said, it's all the agencies in Oakland, all the agencies in Washtenaw, almost all the agencies in Macomb, two-thirds of the agencies in Wayne. And we don't sell, and we always say that, and sometimes I say it to the point of annoying people, I say, "We're not a vendor, we don't sell, and we don't have any customers because we're a governmental consortium, she's come to us, request membership, and become a partner." And I think it's, we're able to spread out the cost, and we're able to leverage a lot of infrastructure that's already in place, you've got some of it here with your wide area network that's going to be leveraged to come back, LaPierre County who's joining about the same time, they're leveraging investment they've already made, Oakland County invested, so it's real collaboration, and it's a sharing of infrastructure, which is why we're able to do what we're doing, and it's why you don't have the big capital outlay at the beginning of a project, because it's in place, and we develop and own most of it, so we don't have the issues with software licensing and paying those memberships and those meetings.
Any questions for Jamie while he's up there, we might get him back up if we need him. Thanks, Jamie. Okay. Tom, you want to keep going, or you want me to bring somebody else up for a few minutes?
Um.
I want you to wrap it up at the end and tell us what you want.
Okay, I'm just about done here, I mean, you've got the financials as well. You know, we've talked a lot about what the benefits are, I really see a big benefit in this, the information sharing, it just makes us better at our job, and that's going to make the safety of the public just that much easier to provide. It's really important that we have a lot of these tools, we have to become more efficient, you know, we're all, we're all working harder, we need to work smarter, and I think we've tried to do that, we've done the best we can with the tools we've had, this is a tool that's going to let us do that. And like, the last thing on there, it's, on the sheet I gave you, it says it's a permanent solution, I quoted permanent, I hate to use the word permanent, but I think this is probably the closest thing we're going to find to a permanent solution. When we go to this, I don't think you're going to see somebody in 10 years coming up here and saying, you know, "We need a million dollars for," but by then, it'll probably be, "We need $50 million for, for a new system." I think we can grow with them, and they're going to provide the needs that we have, provide for the needs that we have.
Very good, thank you, undersheriff. We'll have you tell us a little later on what you want.
Okay.
I would like, if Chief Reeves would come up, the reason I'm asking the chief to come up here is because he worked with Clemis for 27 years, Mike?
Pretty close, somewhere in there.
Yeah, and he's got a lot of hands-on experience and good testimonial to tell us what, what you see in the system and how it's going to help us.
Sure, what I can tell you is that Clemis is a cost-effective and efficient records management system in CAD, which is computer aided dispatch, that has multiple modules that work in a modern law enforcement field. I've had a relationship with Jamie and Clemis for 25 to 27 years, I've employed Clemis for that time using their CAD, I've utilized all their modules, I'll tell you that it's a standard bearer in most counties, specifically Oakland County, Macomb County, a good portion of Macomb County was always on Clemis, but the other counties, Wayne, Oakland, Washtenaw County, and it's, they branched out. I see it to serve a couple of different purposes. One, I think that it'll help our service to the citizens that request our capabilities, and it'll allow us to be much more efficient with the limited resources that we have. And I can give you a couple of examples. As the undersheriff mentioned, there's certain programs that come with this all-inclusive à la carte process here, okay? Crime mapping, making data-driven decisions, and placing allocation of resources based upon that data, those type of things, we're doing that now, but I'm paying a private vendor 6,000 for this, 3,000 for that, 2,000 for that. When I go to Clemis, those are costs I'll recoup because it's in the package price. So there's cost savings there that I'll be able to spread in the budget, or to return that money back to the city, or spread in the budget to help other areas, reference overtime and stuff like that. I've been a part of that consortium where we've sat and made the decisions and planned the future of Clemis. I'll give you an example, we vote on all the things that come before Clemis, we vote on membership, we vote on what type of equipment we're going to spec out for future use. As a CAD administrator in a PSAP, which is the dispatch center, I utilize, if I had a problem with the CAD at 3 o'clock in the morning, within four hours, Clemis had that fixed, and I don't care if it was just a monitor that went out, or I had a major failure. That type of service is available through this consortium. So I'm a big believer in Clemis, it works, I've utilized it, I think it's an appropriate, it's an award-winning program, it's been recognized, and I, the only thing I'd add to it is there's, there's a great power in collaborative projects, and especially in grants, and Jamie did mention that they rewarded a cops grant, several hundred million dollars, and they were actually, showed how much efficiency they could save an average police department, or all the members of Clemis, and it was a staggering amount of man-hours. So I would ask you to wholeheartedly endorse this program, and Bill, you had a chance to go there and take a look at it, and it is an amazing, amazing product.
Any questions for Chief Reeves?
City of Port Huron, is city council going to consider this for the city?
Absolutely, I've already recommended it, we're signed on, we're going.
Your board hadn't approved it yet, have they?
They approved it in my budget last year.
So have you already got a contract with?
I've already made application to Clemis, I'm waiting for the connectivity part, we're ready to go.
Any other questions?
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Matt, do you want to fill some holes that you might know that we've missed in some form? As I mentioned before, Lieutenant Paulus has been working on this for a long time.
Yeah, you know, the undersheriff did a good job summarizing, the only thing I would add is, we started, I call it with Chief Reeves, The Voyage, about four years ago in 2010, and we actually did look at Clemis, but at that time, Clemis was using an older RMS system that was purchased from Motorola, Jamie said? And, you know, it just didn't, it wasn't going to fit us, and what we found out is they were in the, I think, you were in the process, or I know that you had talked about, they were in the development of an RMS, you know, and it was new for us, we were going around the state looking at all these systems, and Vicki is who we met with, and at that point, they said, "Yeah, we're looking to change this, you know, process, and it's, it's not working, they're getting a lot of complaints, but we did see a lot of things we liked about it." The undersheriff mentioned the auto impound, and as a shift supervisor, I can't tell you how many calls we get about impounded autos, you know, a lot, obviously, a lot of police work is stopping cars, cars involved in accidents, cars involved in crime, and unfortunately, we have to tow a lot of those in. And right now, we just create different spreadsheets, that's all we have, so what we've done is, we've created spreadsheets over the years, and the jail has done the same thing, they get a need, they don't have a system, so they just create a spreadsheet, it's, it works, but it's not integrated. So one of the things that Clemis did is they listened to the police officers and they built this small impound system, and boy, I tell you, when I saw that, because anytime somebody calls, you just punch it in, you know exactly where the car was impounded, where it's at, who impounded it, why they impounded it, and you can even print off the impound slip and give it to the record driver, so to everybody. And actually, a neat thing, we've already done a lot of the configuration here, like Chief Reeves said, we're waiting for the connectivity, we've done a lot of the training, but as complex as the system is, you run into, you know, issues, and this is the issue we're here tonight is about, about connection. But that impound slip was a piece that Clemis took out of the old system and build it into the new system. the old system and build it into the new system. And the last thing I wanna, and the under sheriff touched on a little bit, it gets us out of that buying these big systems. We spent a whole year, I think when Chief Reeves first came to Port Huron, we spent the better part of 2010 sitting through these one- and two-day demonstrations on these CAD RMS, and Tim was there too, sitting through these systems and trying to evaluate them. And they're complex systems. And this really gets us out of that, you know. We're collaborating with 100 other departments, you know, and they're working together and saying, "Hey, what do we need?" It gets us out of those big upfront costs. And that's the big cost that I, at least for the, the board's recommendation, it gets the county out of these, these big huge upfront costs to, to develop the software.
Matt, I appreciate that. Are you the one that could tell us a little bit more about the connectivity, so that these guys know the OptiMan or somebody else that shouldn't talk about?
Tiffany would be the one I would defer to on anything connectivity-wise.
Any questions for Lieutenant Paulus?
Just one.
Commissioner Rehm?
On the impounding, you're currently building spreadsheets, it's gotta take amount of time. So, part of the consideration is the cost of this, and we'll get to that in a minute, the cost of what this is gonna be. But what kind of cost savings, if you could give me a ballpark figure, the hours that are gonna be saved at the sheriff for consideration that, even though we're gonna purchase this potentially anyways, that if we do, we can justify it by the cost savings.
Right. No, that, that's a good question. And some of those costs are really hard to quantify. But one of the things I did, because I really like to find out how things work. So, I like to watch how things go from one system, from the police to the prosecutor, the courts. And I know Jamie knows that we're working, there's another small pilot that we're working on with the state of Michigan to try and get this data to move from the police report to the prosecutor's office, to the court, based on standards, so that it doesn't matter what RMS or what vendor you use, everybody's following the same standard. So, it brings down the cost a lot. Because a lot of these vendors, they're very proprietary. So, if you don't have their system, they just won't, they just won't integrate. So, that's a side note.
On that same thing, the efficiency of that, where now you potentially, if I'm understanding it, once you enter it in, it's gonna be...
It's in there once.
It's in there, you got it, you don't have to go back. Whoever's putting the information in, you won't have a time lapse from the time that you actually put it in.
And conservatively, what I've found out, again, a lot of it's the names, addresses, birth dates, license plates on cars, VIN numbers on cars, it's information that's already in one database. You know, conservatively, it's about 50 to 75% of that, that data's already in there. So, if it's just a, like an accident report, you know, conservatively, it's about 50% of that data's already in the officer's screen, they can pull it into the, into the system. Yeah, there's still gonna be some typing, we're still gonna have some dictation for these longer interviews and some of these longer investigations. But a lot of the, you know, we talked about the impound. It's a VIN number on a car, it's the owner on the car, it's the, the model and the make and all that secretary of state information, it's already in their database. You just need to pull it in.
Any other questions for Lieutenant Paulus? Matt, appreciate it. Tom Koenig, is there anything you wanna add in? You're, you're here, you've been following this thing for a long time, if you wanna say anything, or not, it's your call.
Probably don't need to listen to me rehash a whole bunch of things, but just to touch on or rehash a few of the key points is, this is something we've been working on for a long time, just because of our close working relationship with our borders, the fact that criminals don't understand jurisdictional boundaries, and the fact that if we pick up somebody, I don't know if Port Huron police officers had contact with them, a deputy in one of the townships had a contact with them. We have no way of sharing that information currently. And coming into one collaborative effort, now we're not only just sharing the information with us amongst our agencies within Saint Clair County, but now those people that are coming across 69, up 94, through the bridges, we have that ability to now start to put these pieces together and, and help us do our job much more efficiently. And then also from the dispatch standpoint, since myself, Chief Reeves, the sheriff, all sit on the dispatch board, is we know that our CAD systems end up life. It's gonna be very, very expensive. And by all the police agencies in Saint Clair County coming together under this one system, now that'll help the dispatch center also keep their costs down and allow us to move data much more efficiently between all the agencies.
Any questions for Chief Koenig?
Commissioner Rehm, so, it's gonna be part of our computed, computer-aided dispatch system, so are there modules for FIRE and EMS?
Yes. In fact, a lot of the things that currently talking about doing spreadsheets, and a lot of the things on the FIRE side of it, the EMS side is pretty easy. The emergency medical dispatch is something that'll, that's already integrated in both systems. FIRE dispatch right now, what they're doing is using cards that are either typed out or hand-printed from the FIRE department, saying what type of resources they need for the calls. And that will now all be integrated in through Clemis CAD. They're building the layers right now in the GIS. So, based on the point of the incident, the system will already be able to provide cues to the dispatcher to aid in the speed and reduce potentials for mistakes being made in the dispatch process.
I just asked that question because I see all the police agencies represented here, and we're talking about computer-aided dispatch. Police agencies are not the only customer.
You're correct. That's right, in both. Myself and Chief Reeves also have to manage a FIRE department. I'm on the executive board of the County Fire Chiefs Association. This system, Clemis has just developed a new module that will allow the CAD information to be put, pushed out to smart devices like cell phones, email address, that'll provide a lot of information, especially to our rural volunteer fire departments, that'll help them provide dispatch information, routing information.
Thank you. Commissioner Heidemann?
Just a question about, Jeff Friedland has a lot of information about hazardous materials that might be stored in various places around the county. If, if there's a fire in a, in a facility, would that information be fed to the firemen so they don't get a surprise when they arrive?
That's something that will have to be inputted into the system, just like we currently do now, I believe. And Jamie can correct me if I'm wrong, but we can put flags on any particular address or location. It doesn't matter if it's a chemical, health hazard emergency, whether it's something that's a safety hazard because of warrants or violent. It'll work across all disciplines, police, FIRE, EMS, to be able to flag those locations.
We call that premise data. So, there can be data in CAD already, that CAD builds particulars about different addresses. So, it's available for the dispatchers, available for responders, if you need to add. What CAD is set to do, and what it's able to do, is every agency's configured uniquely. So, it's not just, even though it's one CAD, it's already, the CAD is dispatched, you know, 200 different agencies, police, FIRE, EMS. It's all configurable, like, like the director said, not just based on location, but based on incident type. So, that's gonna say, if you're the type community that have multiple fire stations, and you have a certain kind of apparatus at one, but not the other, it might, it'll even recommend you actually set this apparatus for different stations. So, it's location, it's incident type, and it's all configurable in CAD.
Any other questions? Yes, Chief, or Commissioner Riley?
You said Chief Riley, yeah, all right. Tom, is that, that right then, and the FIRE's alerting the FIRE department, so it could be alerted through their cell phones, et cetera? Is that something that we can look at, or has it been looked at?
I don't know if it's been. I mean, they will receive the call as soon as it's identified in CAD through that. I'm not sure that's something the FIRE departments wanna rely on, is their sole source for alerting them, but...
It's a new function. We just developed that in the last couple months. As, as they said, we're developing a new computer-aided dispatch. And part of that was a big important factor we're finding, especially with more rural FIRE departments, is that they don't have full time, they don't have devices in their vehicles, but the police do, only the computers. But we have the ability to send that call for service, that dispatch information, to either a phone number or an email address. So, smartphone's out there, and now we can leverage that. That dispatch information will come over the phone, and it'll update as more information to be assigned. So, it's kind of a, it's a cheap way to leverage out and provide people that already have devices, or way to add.
Good, good, thank you.
Chief, thank you very much for coming. Tiffany, would you do the connectivity piece right now? The system can't move until we get some connectivity in some form. We're waiting on LaPierre County to do their fiber optic piece, but while we're waiting for that, we have an alternate way to go. Am I correct?
That's correct.
Did I say that right?
Yep, you, you got it. There is no fiber between LaPierre County and Oakland currently. They are constructing that. I think last we heard, they were saying six to nine months. I'm not sure if that's still good information. But in the meantime, we looked at a number of solutions, but because of the bandwidth we need, it looked like OptiMan was our best solution. And that's essentially high-speed connectivity through AT&amp;T. So, we looked at pricing through AT&amp;T for a one-year contract, or a 36-month contract, three years, sorry. And the one-year was really cost prohibitive. It's very expensive to do a one-year contract. So, we're looking at a three-year contract through AT&amp;T for OptiMan. And how it works with OptiMan is if you disconnect early, you pay 50% of the remaining cost. So, the break-even point is 18 months. I think our thought process is, it makes sense to go ahead and do the three years, and then hopefully connect with LaPierre County and the RISO's fiber, once that's done, somewhere at the halfway point. And then, you know, going forward, we believe it'll be less expensive than OptiMan. So, it's 100 gig, 100, 100 meg connection. Our intention is that for sure, Port Huron, city Port Huron and Saint Clair County would connect through that connection. If any of the other outside agencies wanted to also connect through us, they could do that.
Right now, I know Marine City is going through Comcast, and it's working for them, but they don't have a lot that they need to do. And it seems to be working for them.
Yeah, it's, it's probably less data. I don't believe they're doing anything with mugshots or some of the things that, like that, that we would be looking at doing.
Do you have the dollar figures on OptiMan?
I don't have them right in front of me. I believe they were in the packet.
Can you give us a kind of a quick look at what we're, what we're talking about here, Tiffany?
The upfront cost was about 85, okay, here it is right here, 82, 8,200? Eight, yeah. 8,265 was the upfront cost. That's for equipment to make the connectivity. And then the reoccurring monthly cost is 1166, 11, 1167, we'll round. That's, that's the monthly reoccurring cost.
How much money?
1,167.
That's monthly, you said?
That is monthly.
Now, that monthly fee would, are we, have we agreed yet, is that monthly fee gonna be divided amongst all the agencies that go on it? So, if we have eight or nine agencies that jump on, then that monthly fee would be divided by all of those agencies. That's the way we're looking right now. Okay.
Did your math correctly, 8,200 and roughly 1,200? If I get to that, this is gonna be over $50,000 for an AT&amp;T contract for three years?
Yes.
Any questions for Tiffany on, on the connectivity part of it?
I'll just guess another one on the same thought. It's gonna take, you said, three to six months for them to get on?
They were saying 69, six to nine months in, in July, so we may be at the six-month point.
Right. Well, it's, it looks like it's a good benefit for the county, the cities. If we tie into LaPierre County, we're gonna have this contract for three years, or 18 months anyways. What's it gonna cost to tie into LaPierre, if you know that?
We have not received a price from them.
Tiffany, the court, the court system uses JAVs for the data transfer for not having to transport prisoners. I believe there's still a process called JAVs, all that court equipment. And this Clemis seems to use something called OakView or some different kind of a system. Are you familiar with that?
That's the video conferencing, right? Is that what they're talking about?
Is that, will that require a change out of hardware or IT equipment? If you went, assuming you went with something like Clemis, and I don't know, I've talked to Mike Welling a little bit about the court's interest or the prosecutor's office's interest, but how would that interface? Would that be the next thing? You do Clemis, and now we've gotta get this OakView system. And do we have a T1 line or WAN connection, or whatever's required to, to move that data? You know, is one, we don't wanna go up in one direction and find out we're not ready, you know, on the other half of the system? Have you looked at any of that?
I was not aware that the courts were considering Oak net.
Well, I'm just asking, if you're gonna go to Clemis, I mean, I've talked to the board members, Bill and some others, if you're gonna go to something like Clemis, you would think you'd want state court administrator's office, prosecutor's office, the court systems, the district court, Marine City, to everybody, you know, showing interest and kind of all move in one direction. I mean, I understand it has tremendous standalone capabilities, the, the mugshot deal, the live scan for fingerprints, that'd be stunning, you know. But this other piece of it, it would seem like we would want to have the discussion with other persons who might wanna utilize that. Maybe these folks know what's happened in other counties, or how does it interface with our current system, because it seems to be requiring a totally different system, and it sounds redundant, or might be not cost-effective. That's, that's my question.
I'm always curious how your interface is today.
Pardon me?
I'm always curious of how your interface is today. So, if the records management system is interfacing with ours today, I'd like to see, you know, get an idea of how that's done, and see how that can be rough.
See, if we contract with Clemis, if we contract with Clemis, you've got some agencies, Port Huron contracts with Clemis, other cities, municipalities contract with Clemis. The county is gonna contract with Clemis through what source? Through the prosecutor's office, the court system, the sheriff? Is that one bundled fee, or do you have five different $50,000 contracts, you know?
I don't think we got any $50,000 contracts.
Well, I looked at one for the city of Novi, it was $56,000.
Well, I don't know what you compiled for the 50, but we don't actually, Novi, for example, is an Oakland County district court.
Their in-county fees are different than out-county.
There's 17 different district courts in, in Oakland County. Four of them are Oakland, and the other 13 are. And they're very varied based on what you do. Clemis currently doesn't provide a case management system for a circuit or a district court.
Does or does not?
Does not. So, all the other counties, as you said, all the, all the agencies in Washtenaw, and two-thirds in Wayne, and all of them in Oakland. So, if there's some interfaces that exist today between your current system and it's moving data to the, to the current circuit court system or district court system, we're always interested in seeing how that's done today, how that can be rough.
And currently, there is no interface between our records management and the court system. There is an interface between the jail system and the courts, but that's not part of this project.
But I think that's something that, you know, you might, in taking the long view, you might wanna do things that would promote something like that, you know, in the long view.
And that's how we've, actually, that's been the evolution of Clemis. We had three or four applications in the 90s, and now we have a whole suite, and it just keeps going on with interfaces. The discussion that took place earlier about eliminating redundancy data entry, once you put it in one spot, it can have it everywhere it needs to be. So, it, it, the functionality is growing as, as membership grows, and, and requests grow, and funding grows, and everything else.
You're updating your infrastructure. They had some imaging issues way back, and now this mugshot picture link, or whatever it is, you're, I see you're investing in other, better, like the mugshot imaging is better now than it was, say, five years ago, or?
I don't recall any imaging issues or any problems we've had. But we've had a regional mugshot system. We first implemented with eight police departments in Oakland County in 1996, and now it's grown. I think we've got 80 different mugshot systems. And we've moved from our original regional mugshot vendor to our current mugshot vendor. And actually, our current mugshot vendor is the same one that, that Saint Clair County Sheriff uses today.
Yeah. Well, I tried to do some research on it. There'd been historically, I see you'd make improvements, and there's, things come up, and you move in the right direction, and it's a high-quality imaging system for mugshots. And I tried to get familiar with what, you know, how usable it is. You would think this, the fingerprint link with the state police and the FBI, and the other agencies and everything else, I mean, I can see where it would have value, so.
And I think as it moves forward, it'll, there'll be more interfaces. We're at, just recently talking about, as Lieutenant had mentioned, about RMS data moving out to a central gateway, and prosecutor's system can use to pull in the great electronic warrants without redundant data entry. So...
When you install Clemis, do they take random GPS locations for all cellphone activity in the county, or how does that work? Do you have any, what access do you have for...
I'm not understanding the question, sir.
Well, for instance, if we were to take on Clemis, we'd have to have current, what do they call it, street maps or GIS, street mapping?
GIS map file, correct.
And do we, does Saint Clair County have that sufficiently up to date? I mean, I don't know.
No, there's gonna need to be some additional development of that.
So, that would be a cost to the county in addition?
Correct.
Does anybody know what that would be, or?
About $6,500.
That's it?
We've already done, we've already done some GIS work with Clemis. We've provided them some of it, and then they've cleaned it up. They've done it for the RMS portion. It needs to be better for the CAD. I'm gonna really simplify it here, because I'm getting a little bit outside of my area. But they've estimated about $6,500. It's included in the, in the cost spreadsheet for the CAD underneath the, I believe it's underneath the dispatch cost. GIS CAD one-time fee of about $6,500 to do, drill that down.
Is there any connectivity costs? I'm looking for, I always look for hidden charges, like the data transfer, like with cell phones and so forth, you get so many megabytes of data. Are there ever additional costs to get access to Clemis and back, the data transfer piece of it, you know?
You mean from the mobile data computer to the...
Whoever's using... Whoever's using it, I mean, the squad cars have their mobile units, maybe there, maybe there's there too, I don't know.
It's not a fee to Clemis. You're gonna continue with your current monthly account that you have through whatever wireless carrier, and I believe it's Verizon. So, they're gonna use our existing Verizon account.
Tiffany, are we unlimited for data? Do we have the unlimited plan for data transfer countywide as far as, or do we pay by the gigabyte, or?
No, no, for the, for the mobile cars, it's not that. Yes.
The statewide price.
What's that, Matt?
Statewide price.
I don't, I don't know if this'll answer your question about the, the courts, Mr. Samasco, but we don't, we looked at it, we don't, we don't see any real value right now in, at least in, in Circuit Court, or the prosecutor's office becoming members of Clemis. There is a real value for the district court, and that's so that the citations that are written in the car electronically can be automatically sent over to the court. We don't have to have somebody sitting and enter that data from the officer's paper ticket into the court system. By the district court joining that, joining Clemis, that data will automatically come in. As far as the prosecutor's offices goes, we don't, we don't have, we have a connection with them that we send our reports through, but it's not the same system. And I talked to Chief Assistant Prosecutor Gilliot this morning, we had a meeting, and he brought up the fact that, he knew we were coming tonight, and he was talking about Marine City. The way they get their reports from Marine City is a PDF file, and he was really impressed with it because of the way Clemis lays out their reports. There's a, I'm gonna correct word on the side.
In the way that CADs are?
Yeah, it's, it's, the way it's laid out, it's very easy to search. You don't have to, a prosecutor does not have to physically, or even on a computer screen, go through the entire report. If there's a tabulation on the side that they can click on, and it takes them right to that section of the report, and they can read through it. So, there's, it's really easy to transfer it just by way of a PDF file from, from Clemis RMS to the prosecutor's office.
Any other questions before Tiffany sits down? All right. Tiffany, I guess you're all done. I wanted, before we jump in too far here, I wanted to see if Tim Conger had anything that he wanted to add in as the Director of Central Dispatch, because this will be a big part of your program too, Tim.
Chief, I almost stole most of my thought here, but just a couple of things real quick. The incident notification system that he was talking about, where they receive the calls on their cellphones, smartphones, they are currently using a system called ACTR 911, that being the fire departments. They pay for that service. With this, they're not gonna have a fee for the service, but they will have a text message that comes to their phone that will apply to whatever text messaging contract they have on their individual phones. So, that's just something you can clear it up with them. The other thing they're talking about with as far as suggestibles, you have a certain type of fire incident. It's something we have now, but we never, ever set it up properly with this system. It'll be work, but we can set it up properly. They have the ability through their system to on-shift and off-shift crews. Port Huron Fire Department has four different crews, chief or two. Or, we can actually take and say, okay, A Crew, B Crew, C Crew are off-duty today, D Crew's on, so, when we get a call, we can send a message to D Crew, A, B, and C Crew can see this, we don't mess with them at all. The premise and proximity alerts, the folks are talking about premise. Premise is an exact location. If you're going to 1310 Blah Street, there's a hazard here. With Clemis, something we don't have now, we can create proximity alerts, saying, okay, fire department's going for a big brush fire, but next door, there's a shed that the guy's been storing fireworks for, you need to be aware of. That's what allows us to do. So, there's a little bit more functionality in this. The big thing for my dispatchers, the frustration part to be taken out of this, there will be a mapping system with AVLs. If you've ever listened to the radio before, dispatchers continually have to ask, where are you? Where are you? So, we can give you a call. Or, we have to broadcast any available unit in this area. With an AVL system, they'll be able to see where they're at.
AVL is?
Automatic Vehicle Locator.
Go ahead.
Sends out a beacon, tells us their location. So, that'll take some frustration out of my people and save us some time in dispatching. So, it's just some things I wanted to let you know with the system.
Any questions for Tim Conger? All right. Under Sheriff, what do you want?
My answer is usually a million dollars, but I won't ask you. Hopefully, you can see that we're, we're committed to this project. We think, along with Port Huron PD, that it's the best project and the best solution for the issue we have now. Every police agency in St. Clair County, except for Memphis, who has his very small three officers, they're gonna stay with Macomb County, and Clay Township, because of a contract they've signed with their current vendor, is going to go to Clemis. All, all the other agencies have signed on. They have verbally, at this point, committed to paying the monthly connection fees for OptiMan, so, that part is taken care of. As far as they're joining Clemis, that's up to them. They've all made application, they've all been accepted. We've made application and been accepted. There was no, we didn't, we didn't have any, there was no strings attached to that. We just made application a few months ago so that we knew that we would be accepted and we could continue to move on. There was no obligation, so we went ahead and did it. But hopefully, that shows you that we are definitely committed to the project. This is the way we wanna go. The fees for Clemis, this spreadsheet was developed by Dean Alderdy. She's crunched all the numbers and looked at it, and it breaks down by the sheriff's office, the connectivity portion, the dispatch portion, court costs, and then, there's some additional options that we have. The nice thing about it, about Clemis too, is that we can kinda pick and choose what we want. We know we're gonna go with RMS, we know we're gonna get CAD, and all the things that come along with that. We really need the district court to be a part of that because of the efficiencies. If the circuit court or the prosecuting attorney's office decides they want to join, they always could, we know what the cost could be, would be to those agencies. We can look at mugshot down the road and decide, is it something we wanna do? Is it cost-effective? We don't have to go with Clemis on mugshot right now. If it's more cost-effective for us to maintain that, that part of the, of the system on our own, we'll, we'll do that. However, if, in a couple of years, or whatever the timeframe is, we, we figure it's, it's cheaper and more efficient to go with them, then we can do that. OakView, if we decide that we wanna become part of that, we could, we could do that down the road. It's not something we have to do now. It's not something we need to do now, so, I'm not even, we're not even really considering Kind of the bottom line is that, if you, if you look at it, I think, crunching all the numbers, my, I came up with about $300, considering countywide, over the, over the next year, about $300 cheaper than what we're, the systems are running now. There are some significant upfront costs for dispatch and the connectivity, but I think once those, once those costs are taken care of, this system is going to be, it's gonna, it's not gonna cost us anymore at this point, a little bit more in the future, but what we get is just, it's, it's really hard to put a price tag on, although you can do that.
What's the first thing we need to do, Tom?
The first thing we need to do is get the connection made.
And is that what you're looking for tonight?
That's absolutely what we're looking for. The OptiMan system would allow us, would give us enough, enough information and enough connectivity to run our RMS, our jail mugshots, everything through that, get it back to CAD or back to Clemis, so that we could, we could operate.
So, you're not looking for approval tonight to spend money to join Clemis, but you are looking for money right now to get the connectivity going?
That's correct.
And a lot of the conversations that we had tonight were about that and the costs on that. Commissioner Rushing?
On a connectivity, if I understood you correctly, for AT&amp;T to connect, it's $8,200. And then, we're gonna have a three-year contract with them at a cost approximately $43,000. We're gonna have shared cost. Would it be a reasonable assumption that the sheriff is gonna be using 50%? So, we're gonna recoup potentially, like, from the City of Port Huron and City of Marysville, another 50% from the other entities that are gonna be using us in the connectivity.
Well, the initial connection is something that we're gonna have to make. If only the sheriff's office and the dispatch decided to go, it's, it's a connection we're gonna have to make. I don't wanna speak for the chief or the city manager in Port Huron, but the meeting we had, Chief, you know, he verbally, the city manager verbally agreed that he would share some of that cost to make that initial connection, because they, they absolutely wanna use it too. They pushed enough information that they couldn't do it any other way.
The reason I ask this, 'cause we're gonna have a three-year contract with AT&amp;T, which means that we're gonna have $50,000 out there. I'm just saying, potentially, we could recoup up to about 50% of the $43,000. I imagine the 8,200 will be right out of the county's pocket, and then, they'll tie in the shared cost of roughly $1,200 a month. That's what you're talking about, shared cost, correct?
Yes. The 8,200 is something that will be, that the City of Port Huron agreed to assist us with, whether we do it a third or 50%, you know, it remains to be.
Tom, did you say it also was 300? Presently, what we got, it's gonna be $300 a month less?
Not a month, a year.
Year?
Yes.
Okay.
Taking everything into consideration from the entire county level, taking the initial costs, which is hard to do because they're $32,000 upfront to get everything in place. The annual costs are, for 2015, will be $373 less. In 2016, there is a price increase already in place in Clemis. In 2016, it'll be about $900 more in 2016. And then, prices level out then until Clemis agrees to, until the consortium agrees to raise the prices.
Well, ask Commissioner Heidemann.
If I understand you correctly, the present system that we have has outlived its light likelihood or usefulness.
That's correct.
And we're gonna have to do something.
Yes.
And the services that are provided by this system are far more expansive than the existing system you have.
That is correct.
Plus, from your standpoint, it's what we would call user-friendly?
Absolutely. Yeah, we, we had training from Clemis that was supposed to take three days. Most of our people made it through in, what, Matt, two?
One to three days.
Yeah, I mean, it was, it was that easy for, for an officer to sit down and understand what he was being, what he was looking at, so it is very user-friendly.
Now, from, from your estimation, because the officers can now input the data while they're in their vehicle at the site of the accident or the arrest or whatever, that means they can spend more time on the road and less time back in the office doing paperwork? Is that a fair assessment?
Yeah, that's, that's not inaccurate. I mean, they, right now, what they do is they take the, all the information they have, they dictate it into a tape recorder, and at the end of their shift, they drop it in a basket, and a typist types it. A lot of those reports are already laid out there, they can, they can enter the information. A lot of the information is already in there. We, we're very redundant right now. When you arrest a drunk driver, for example, this is my favorite example because it's so horrible, you enter the person's name, address, phone number, height, weight, driver's license, about five times in five different reports. With Clemis, you're able to pull that information to each one automatically. You don't have to sit and re-enter it. A typist doesn't have to type it five to different times. It's, it's automatic, and it's gonna, it's just, it's gonna save the officer on the road time. It's really gonna save us time in the office. You know, with, with our budget reductions we've had, as opposed to laying off officers on the road or corrections officers in the jail, the sheriff has decided that we need to reduce some of the support staff we have. I think it's a very good decision. It, it made us a little less efficient, but it kept public safety at the level we needed. If we're more efficient inside, then that, it helps us out there. We're actually one month behind now.
That, that's my point, that, far I'm trying to get to, you know, the cost is about the same, and if we can keep the officer on the road more hours, that serves the purpose of public safety, in my opinion.
Absolutely.
Commissioner Riley, you got a question?
No, I have a comment. I think everybody has said tonight the different aspects of this. My opinion is that I'd certainly be in favor. I think it's something that's gonna finally move us up to the, the new state. I think it's, it's gonna speed up the program, it's gonna help you with, I like the idea with the mugshots and the things you can do for the car, GPS where your, you know, vehicles are, et cetera. I think for safety, if nothing else, and rather than you listening to them calling and asking your status, where you at, et cetera, for calls, I think the whole thing sounds great. Yeah, it's gonna cost a few bucks, we understand that, but when you talk about, you're gonna save some per year also, probably when you get into this, we're gonna find out it's a lot better than even what we dreamed. So, I'd be one, one to be definitely in favor.
Administrator Kaufman, you would like to have a little input, I believe?
I just wanted, a couple of the board members have asked questions about how does this compare to the existing system, what are the new costs? And, Under Sheriff Buckley indicated a few minutes ago that the Finance Department, Dean Alderdy, has put together some of the information that you see in front of you. She worked very closely with the Under Sheriff, with Tim Conger and Dispatch, and with Tiffany to get a good understanding of what some of the costs are. She's got a pretty good and a very succinct report that we can share with you electronically. We could probably get it out to you first thing in the morning, you can get an idea. It will contain some of this information, but it will be much more succinct than what you see here. It groups things together, so it's a little easier to understand rather than having to focus on individual pieces of equipment or services that you're looking at. So, it takes a, let's say, a bigger view of it. But one of the things to keep in mind is, it has been pointed out tonight, is these costs don't take into consideration some of the inherent efficiencies that will be available under this new system. Also, it doesn't include the costs of some of the tools that you're currently, just do not have access to, that, as many people have mentioned tonight, that would be beneficial to the fire departments as well as to law enforcement. And it certainly is much cheaper than any of the solutions that have been looked at earlier in this process, as, as Lieutenant Paulus pointed out when he spoke to you as well. So, we'll get that report to you first thing in the morning, and you can take a look at that before the full board meeting on the 20th.
Thank you. Commissioner Rushing?
You're gonna, you're looking for the connectivity approval of that. You need final action, or do you wanna defer our full board to it? Time is of the essence?
Time is of the essence, and right now, the best estimate we have on OptiMan is four to six weeks from the time we order it to installation.
For the cost, I'll make a motion to have this for final action, to approve the connectivity cost.
Which is?
How much is it?
82,000.
82,000?
8,200, I get the, it's on your, 8,265,14. And then additionally, I believe, a three-year contract with AT&amp;T, which is approximately 43, gets you right at $51,000 for a three-year total connectivity in the AT&amp;T contract, which at some point, I'm gonna take for Port Huron and Marysville and the other entities that are gonna be part, they'll be sharing in the $1,200 a month, monthly cost, so that will come down.
I'll second that.
Hey, I have a motion and a support for connectivity for final action tonight. Questions? Commissioner Tomlin?
I'm very impressed with the collaboration of all the departments. I think that's excellent. I really understand that you can't document all the economies of scale that are gonna take place. I've been involved with efforts like this in the past, and one of the things that I, I've pointed out to elected officials before is, if someone came to you and told you, you know, 20 years ago, what it would cost to have email, and someone turned to you and said, "Well, can you document the efficiencies?" And they would say, "Well, no, but we know they're there." I, I, I look at this as, as a similar type of, of initiative. So, I'm also, I've, I've been familiar with Clemis for a long time, not in detail, but I know it has a real reputation, but our administrator raised my question is, we're starting down the road financially, but we really don't have the financial plan in front of us, and we don't know how this plan compares with what we have in the existing budget, unless the information bill that you're gonna be able to distribute to us tomorrow or whenever is gonna include that.
Yes.
And so, it is gonna be close to our existing plans, so we don't have to worry about substantial budget amendments to implement this plan?
There will be differences, yes. Will they be substantial for implementation in 2014? No. But are there going to be costs above and beyond in 15 and 16? Yes.
I'm, I'm concerned about that, to make a decision when we don't know what we're committing to a couple of years. I mean, I've only got this information today, and this seems like a really major purchase to us, and now we're making a multi-year, huge investment, and we're committing to the first part of it. It just seems that this is...
Commissioner Sumasco?
I guess I feel a lot like Carl does. There's, there will be extra fees, there's maintenance fees for different pieces of this. You know, Dave's motion to commit to a tech, the cost, connectivity cost, before we have a, an agreement in place for services. I was gonna ask Bill, wouldn't it be more prudent to, to maybe do this connectivity piece after we have a firm agreement and understanding of contract, and a better understanding for some of these additional costs? And I'm, you know they're gonna be there, we don't know what they are, so I agree with Carl. I just don't wanna just rush in and do that. It's, I support law enforcement, I support the concept, but I think we need more information before we can start buying connectivity and doing other things, unless there's some urgency I don't see.
Well, that additional information, certainly we can have that to you tomorrow. You can review it. What is the urgency? If we push it back, that means two weeks later, before the connection, the AT&amp;T connection is actually put in place. It's my understa- Go ahead. I see, I see somebody over there that wants to add something.
What is the urgency, Bill?
Okay, I think Chief Reeves can address the, the urgency issue.
I apologize, I wouldn't mean to interrupt your conversation, but to give you a little sense of the urgency, we're already behind the ball on this connectivity. It's stalled this project significantly, but I, I do understand the need to have a full understanding.
You're behind, you're behind, we're behind the ball because we wanna move faster than we are?
Right. Let me give you a sense of my urgency. As an example, I have a $6,600 contract that is due December 1st, that I have to renew again, that I would get free with Clemis. That's $6,600 more I could put into this pot here, but I'm gonna have to spend it over here to Public Engines in order to facilitate my online crime reporting program and help keep the capture program afloat. There, there's a number of different contracts that, that are involved with these different entities that we use. That's one of the reasons why Clay Township had to renew their project, because we couldn't move it along in such a manner. They had to re-up with their current vendor because those contracts were coming due. A number of us are facing those significant deadlines now, and, and they're due, so we either have to re-sign and spend that money, and then any efficiencies that we have with Clemis that we plan to utilize, in reality, go down the drain. And there's one other thing I'd like to, I think that's a great analogy in regards to email. I will tell you that I, I realize numerous efficiencies with this system, and, and, and I'll tell you one that I see a, a big cost agency for here on. We operate the same as the Sheriff's Department with the clerical staff that has to type all this information. We are already building the templates in the system right now, so we can have short reports and formatted reporting, and do field-based reporting. That'll limit the number of, of people that I have to have in order to process the work of the force. I can redirect those dollars into public safety on the street and better serve the citizens. So I will tell you wholeheartedly, there's efficiencies that we will gain, and you'll see that you just, you can't, you can't measure. The redundancy problem is, is one huge factor. I'll, I'll tell you, thirty-five years in the business, some officers, after a while, steer away from certain arrests because they're so, just, they bury you in paperwork. Five, six different kinds of, of reports for one arrest. Clemis takes that away because it's-
We're not, I mean, people I think are, you know, warmed up to Clemis, I mean, but I try not to do legal work fast, because you get in trouble when you do stuff fast. These deadlines have been out there for months and months and months and years, and we get it, like Carl said, this is an update and some information, and I've tried to do my due diligence and look at stuff, but to vote, to start moving forward on things, I'm not comfortable working quite that fast, based on what I know at this point. And the urgency is not explained away by the fact that we haven't seen this two months ago or three months ago on costs and figures, you know. So I don't like that argument, "Well, we have to do it because now it's this big urgent problem." I think it's a, I'm not comfortable with that, so.
Commissioner Rushing?
Right, and I appreciate everybody being here tonight and giving us the, the format, but Bill Greatop, this is his project he's been working on. I know he reached out to me and gave me some initial information, so I had a pretty good heads up on this prior to coming to this meeting, so I had a pretty, you know, a decent understanding. Got a much better understanding with everybody being here tonight, and I, I see no reason not to move forward.
Commissioner Heidemann?
I, I agree with Commissioner Rushing. I, I think we need to move forward with this. We've got the professionals in the area saying, "This is the way to do it." We also heard from undersheriff Buckley that the present system is on life support, and from the chief, that, you know, they're, they're caught between a rock and a hard spot. They either gotta spend more money for a Band-Aid for another year or whatever, and all we need is to set up to get going with the connectivity. And I, I don't know about you, but I, I'm ready to go with the whole system now.
Any other?
Bill, I, I'm-
I'm sorry.
Oh, it's okay. I, as I said before, I think it's the right way to go, and I think I have to lean on Bill Greatop a little bit. Bill's been in this since the beginning. He's been kinda leading us in felonies, and Bill's also informed me at numerous times. I've also spoken to some of the officers about it, like Tom and Chief Reeves, and, and I, I understand it seems like maybe a fast move, but it hasn't been fast. It's been a long time coming, maybe fast to some, but to myself, I feel it's the right way to go at this time.
Okay, Commissioner Bohm?
I, I'd just like to see some final numbers, to be quite honest. I kinda signed with Steve on it. I don't know if two weeks is really gonna make or break us on this. I mean, I support the project, but not to have a specific budget number. I mean, we're signing up for something that we don't have the final numbers for, so I, I wouldn't support to move to nine, but a couple of weeks, if he can get us that information. It's just my two cents.
I, I, I would be interested in having a special meeting to approve a text, but I-
No problem with that either, sure.
Right, but for such a large project, our primary, our primary responsibility is the financial. I understand what they're doing with the services and the technology and everything, and everything I've heard, I, but our job is the financial. How is this gonna be paid for on a multi-year basis? And if we don't know, I'm not sure that-
And this touches other parts of the county and the infrastructure. There's a lot going on here. So.
Commissioner Rushing?
Yeah, well, you know, I'm gonna support what I've already had. We have the experts here, and I could make reference to potentially our president. You need to rely on the generals out there in the field. These are our generals. We have our central dispatch supporting it. City of Fort Huron supports it, our sheriff supports it. And these are the experts, and these people that, this is gonna be an efficiency, and it's gonna actually improve public safety, and the faster we can do that, rather than the cost, and I think the cost, if we trust the figures they've given us, it's gonna be within $300 of our existing costs minus the setup cost. And if we're gonna discuss $300 to get a new system over an annual cost, we do have the initial, but if it's gonna potentially be more efficient and improve public safety, I think we need to go forward with it.
Roll call, Bohm?
Commissioner Sumasco?
No.
Commissioner Tomlin?
No.
Commissioner Heidemann?
Yes.
Commissioner Bohm?
No.
Commissioner Riley?
Yes.
Commissioner Rushing?
Yes.
Commissioner Greatop?
Yes.
Or yes, motion passes.
Okay, the motion passes. Final action, connectivity will start. I apologize for the length of this meeting tonight, but there was a tremendous amount of information that, that we acquired. I think everybody has picked up a lot, learned a lot, and as this stuff comes back to us, we're gonna pick up, and we're gonna know right where we're going.
Yeah, I just wanna be clear, in no, in no way do I not support this. My reason for the no was, I just wanted to get the final numbers in two weeks, and so be it.
I would acknowledge that all seven commissioners have told me personally, and I know they're all nodding their heads right now, they all support this, and I understand the speed idea that you're talking about, but we are going to go ahead and move forward with this, and eventually the Clemis piece will come in and we'll work with that piece on active connectivity. And I wanna thank everybody that came tonight for taking the time to come up here. It was an important issue, and I think you shed a lot of light. Jamie, thank you for your comment, and everybody else. Okay, moving on. 7B, the fiscal year 2015 Michigan Mental Health Court Grant Contract.
This is the annual one?
Yes, it is.
I, I would move that, that contract be forwarded to the full board for a final action.
Second?
I have a motion to second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. That goes on to the full board. Item 7C, Residential Connectivity Subs-, Cognitive Substance Abuse Treatment Agreement, Catholic Charities of Southeast Michigan, again, an annual renewal.
Easy for you, so ahead with it.
Yeah, I'll make the same motion, that it be forwarded to the full board.
All right.
I'll second it.
I have a motion in the second. Any discussion? Hearing none, that goes to the full board. 7D is the Day Reporting Supervision Agreement from Huron House, again, contracts that we do regularly.
That's all move.
I'll support.
I have a motion and a support. Any discussion or questions about Huron House?
Uh, we, we went to their open house. I was there. Jeff was there, too.
I was also there.
Yep, and quite impressed with their operation and what they're doing.
They cleaned it up nicely, they do a good job over there now.
And what did, did I read that, $10 a day? Wow. Great service for that price.
Is this for final action, or is this for, this is to go to the full board?
Full board.
Thank you.
Yep. We have the motion and support, all in favor for sending it on to the full board?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Motion carries. Item 7E, Letter of Agreement, Community Mental Health, 2015 Residential Substance Abuse Treatment Program.
I'll move that it be forwarded to the full board.
I'll support that.
I have a motion to support to send it on to the full board. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Law Enforcement Service Agreement with China Township. I think you have the-
Ah, you missed skip F, yeah.
F? Oh, sorry. Agreement with Community Mental Health Post-Holodeck, Stress, Disorder Seeking Safety Services.
All right. I'll move this agreement be forwarded to the full board.
Second?
Motion to support, discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, 7G now. Law Enforcement Service Agreement with China Township.
Move to the full board.
Second?
Motion to support to send it to the full board. Any questions?
The, the costs are, are set in, in a, what's, what's the word I'm looking for?
Current times?
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay.
Been updated. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? 7H is Law Enforcement Service Agreement with Fort Grasham Township.
That's all move.
I'll support.
I have a motion to support to send this on to the full board. Discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion, anybody opposed? Motion carries. 7I, Law Enforcement Service Agreement with Fort Huron Township.
That's all move on that one.
Support? I have a motion to support, discussion on Fort Huron Township.
I, I would just make one comment about all three of those agreements. I'm really happy to see this type of cooperation between the county and these, these other jurisdictions. I think this is the most professional and cost-effective way to deliver law enforcement services.
Very good.
I know it is.
Any other comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Are there any other judiciary or public safety matters that need to come in for this report? Hearing none, there's no information only, so I'll open for a motion to receive the file.
So move.
Support?
Motion to support to receive the file, all in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? I'm hoping for a recess motion.
So move.
Support?
All right, motion to support to recess. All in favor?
Aye.
Judiciary Public Safety Meeting is closed. At 7.
Aye.
E. All right, now we're really gonna fly.
Call over to the Human Services Committee, roll call please.
Commissioner Sumasco?
Here.
Commissioner Tomlin?
Here.
Commissioner Heidemann?
Here.
Commissioner Bohm?
Here.
Commissioner Rushing?
Here.
Commissioner Greatop?
Here.
Commissioner Riley?
Here. Do we, any additions or corrections or changes to the agenda?
Make a motion that we approve the agenda as presented?
Support.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Close. Citizens to be heard, any citizens to be heard tonight? Okay, updates? And structural initiatives? Bill, do you have anything tonight?
I'm sorry, no.
Uh, old business? New business? Uh, first order is proclamation for Veteran of the Year 2014, and I've asked Bill to award this.
Thank you. Jim Fernandez, would you come front and center, please, so that I can read this, and you can be honored accordingly? If any, is your wife with you?
Yeah.
Kathy, if you've got pictures you wanna take, just feel free to move around and do whatever. Jimmy, come on up here. I've known this guy a long time, and that's why I asked Tom, if I could do this, we go back thirty-some years when he used to sing to me when we'd go into country western bars, and it was, it was not good. He wasn't good, I was good. All right, let me get on with this thing. Here's the proclamation recognizing James Fernandez, St. Clair County Veteran of the Year for 2014. Whereas the St. Clair County Board of Commissioners wishes to recognize James Fernandez, who served a five-year term for exemplary military service with the United States Navy from 1969 to 1975. During his tour in Vietnam from 1971 to 73, he volunteered for special operations at Quick Reaction Strike Forces. And whereas Jim has demonstrated strong relationships and values, which are proven by his commitment to his wife Kathy, his five children, nine grandchildren, and one great-grandchild. Jim and Kathy formed a veterans' support group known as Valor. One of their main goals is to make sure every veterans' club in St. Clair County is equipped with an AED, and whereas Jim is currently Senior Vice Commander at Post 3901, and has been a member of the post for forty-three years. Jim also served as quartermaster for seven years and post commander for four years. At the district level, Jim has been the POW MIA Chairman for the past eleven years, and the commander of the National POW MIA Honor Guard. And whereas in 2011, 2012, Jim was chosen as Elginak Citizen of the Year. His involvement in the design, construction, and maintenance of the Elginak Veterans Monument, First Responders Monument, and Veterans Monument in Marine City helped him achieve this honor. He has worked with representatives from Purple Heart to help veterans file claims for benefits, and assists homeless veterans to ensure they have adequate food and shelter. Jim initiated an effort to make sure our Native American veterans of Walpole Island First Nation are recognized for their service with the United States Military. Due to his efforts, we now celebrate Remembrance Day and Veterans Day alongside our comrades of First Nation. Now therefore it be proclaimed that the St. Clair County Board of Commissioners, on behalf of its citizens, does hereby adopt this proclamation recognizing James Fernandez as St. Clair County Veteran of the Year, and extends our deep appreciation for his distinguished service, and urges our fellow citizens to join us with heartfelt thanks and gratitude. Proclaimed this sixth day of November 2014, signed Jeff Bohm Chairperson, Steve Sumasco Vice Chairperson, and Commissioners Carl Tomlin, Howard Heidemann, Tom Riley, Dave Rushing, and Bill Greatop. Jim, my pleasure to read this and to hand it to you.
Thank you.
And I ask you to say a couple of short words.
Do I have time to Google what short words mean? I really appreciate this. This is something I never expected, and, and I pledge to continue doing the work I do for veterans, along with my awareness for everyone, for our POWs and our MIA's. As our missing in action, this is really strong in my heart. One of my, one of my jobs was searching rescue for downed pilots, and you can't always get 'em out. So when it comes to people that are missing in action, I have a strong, strong connection and a commitment that everybody knows what the POW MIA flag and stands for. It's not POW me, it's Prisoner War, Missing in Action. And to put it in perspective, World War I, we're still missing over a hundred thousand Americans who never came back. World War II, we're still missing seventy-six thousand Americans who never came home. Korea, we're at eight thousand veterans who never came home. Vietnam, we're down to sixteen hundred veterans who never came home. In perspective, if you take those numbers and add them up, that's more people than we have in St. Clair County, empty St. Clair County. And picture these people as MIA's, that's how many never came back. So that's my commitment, letting everybody know, and, uh, I'll never waver on that. And I thank you for giving me this honor, and I promise I'll never stop.
Just on a side note, um, Saturday, down at the VFW post, you're having a special event to honor you again, and, uh, Dan Lane from the Veterans Affairs will be down there to re-present to Jim, we're just friends and people down there. And then on the eleventh, I think we're meeting with you again, uh, to give them a thousand dollars for their monument work, and that money comes from the Community Foundation, the Elginak Lions Club, and the Elginak Rotary Club.
Uh, with that thousand dollar grant from the Elginak Rotary and the Elginak Clay Foundation yesterday, um, in the First Responders Monument in Elginak, we added the names of all our past fire chiefs from Elginak, they're all in there now on a brick. Um, our past police chiefs from Elginak, from Bob Christie to present, I didn't see very much, uh, documentation on who was chief prior to that. We do have Elijah Moore in there who was killed in action in 1905, uh, from Elginak in the line of duty. Um, and I believe it's five Clay Township Police Chiefs since they had their own police department. They're all in that First Responders Monument, along with all the, uh, fire chiefs from Ira Township. So, with that, uh, with that grant we got from, uh, the Rotary and the Clay Town, Elginak Clay Foundation, um, the bricks, we worked fast, we got them in, and we wanted to have them in for this event. And I thank you for that, for spearheading that.
Charlie Wofford takes it.
Very good, very, very nice.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I, I'd just like to say that I had the pleasure of working with our honorary on both the veterans' monument and the first responders' monument in Elginak, and he's a real force of nature when he, when he gets, in, in his mind that there's something that's gonna take place in the city park, look out, it's gonna happen.
Thank you, Charlie.
I'd like to have a motion on this proclamation, please.
Also move.
I would support.
Moved and supported, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, item B, uh, Health Department Early and Close Staff Development Training Day.
Would, would this be for final action? The proclamation?
The proclamation was, yes.
Oh, I know, I, I thought we voted, I'm sorry.
Yeah, we did vote on that, we're on being.
I'm asking if the, if the closure of the Health Department is for final action, if it's not, okay. Thank you.
I would take a motion on that though.
I'll make a motion, we send it on to the full board.
Support.
Moved and supported, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, any, uh, other human services matters?
I was just going to comment on the, uh, Health Advisory Board resignation. Uh, what district is that for, that, that, or districts? Because those, those districts are a little different than Commissioner districts. Uh, do, do we know?
I believe it's Commissioner Samasco's district.
Okay.
If I remember.
Okay. Thank you.
My, my, excuse me, my recollection is, these are the same districts as the Urinatics Board?
No, the Health Department, I believe, is a five.
Yeah.
Five districts.
Yeah, okay.
They are Urinatics Boards of three.
So it can't be in just one Commissioner's district?
No.
Yeah. And that's what I was getting to. We'll have to, could you get that information?
Yeah.
Look it up and get it to us.
I think that because, um, Commissioner Samasco's district is at the top, and it comprises a large area.
Could be.
My district is at the top also.
Harder to get at the top. Down, down, boys.
But anyway, if, if we could double check that, uh, that would be nice.
Do we have a support on that?
Yes.
Okay. Moved and supported, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Okay, uh, information only, uh, item A, we had Health Advisory Board resignation, and B was the Health Department Point of Interest.
Make a motion, we file those?
Support.
Moved and supported for filing. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I'll make a motion to receive and file package.
Support.
Moved and supported, favor?
Aye.
Make a motion, we recess?
Support.
Moved and supported for recess.
I'd like to call the St. Clair County Board of Commissioners, Environmental and Public Works Committee, mean to order. Madam Clerk, would you take the role?
Commissioner Samasco?
Here.
Commissioner Tomian?
Here.
Commissioner Bohm?
Here.
Commissioner Riley?
Here.
Commissioner Rushing?
Here.
Commissioner Greata?
Here.
Commissioner Heideman?
Here. Uh, at this time, do we have, uh, are there any additions, deletions, or changes to the agenda?
Make a motion, we approve the agenda as presented?
Support.
Okay, it's been moved and supported, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Motion carried, we have an agenda. Any citizens to be heard regarding environmental or public works matters? Seeing none, any updates from commissioners? Seeing none, any conceptual initiatives from, from administration? Uh, any, no old business, we'll go to new business. Uh, the Fort Grashit County Park lease renewal.
I move that the lease renewal be forwarded to the full board for action.
Do we have a second?
Or?
Second by Commissioner, uh, Greata. Uh, that's with the Detroit Water Board.
Is there any cost, any dollar figure, do the, do we pay them anything at all?
Uh, no, 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 we don't. I think, uh, with our information that was left before us, unless I was the only one that got it, um, I'd, I'd asked that question before, and no, there, there is not. There, there is an agreement that talks about where the, uh, intake is and commitments about not building on top of it and restoring the damage, but there are no financial terms.
Intake is way out in the middle of the lake.
It's the subsurface easement piece of it, if we just have to destroy some part property, we have to replace that at our own cost.
I, I would say this, that I think the only change that I recall to it was, uh, they requested that, uh, the insurance carrier be of a higher amount, and that's well within what, what our insurance has.
Okay.
Uh, all in favor, uh, I'm sorry, Commissioner Rushing?
Just one, I see this amendment, so we're gonna just attach this to the current or the previous lease agreement, and this will extend it another ten years, so you can just add this to it rather than having to rewrite the lease agreement.
Okay, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Motion carried. Uh, the, uh, Phase Six Gas Collection System Expansion for final action, uh, it seems to me we talked about that already once before.
Last month.
Yeah. Last month. Uh, I would entertain a motion?
So move.
Support. Moved by Commissioner Bohm, support by Commissioner Tomlin. Uh, any discussion?
Question, Howard?
Yes.
What's, why is that final action, what's the, uh, be for that?
We're trying to get the work done before the season closes in on us.
Thank you.
Okay, um, right now, just for the record, uh, we're, we're just getting enough gas to keep those motors running, and so the quicker we can, uh, you know, get some more gas.
Actually, the, the fact that winter's approaching and evidently there's some subsurface work needs to be done makes complete sense, Howard.
We do have a change order committee, um, for our landfill, that three of us sit on it, they do bring different things before that particular committee too, so.
Okay, um, the Light Station Historical Preservation Agreement, uh, I'll move that that be forwarded to the full board.
Support.
Final action. Support it by Commissioner Greata.
Repose?
Uh, we forgot to vote on that? Oh, uh, we need to call a vote on that, correct.
Madam Clerk, would you call the vote on that? I'm sorry.
Commissioner Samasco?
Yes.
Commissioner Tomian?
Yes.
Commissioner Bohm?
Yes.
Commissioner Riley?
Yes.
Commissioner Rushing?
Yes.
Commissioner Greata?
Yes.
Commissioner Heideman?
Yes. Now we can proceed on with the Light, Light Station Historical Preservation Easement Agreement. Uh, we had, uh, we had quite a go-around, uh, with, uh, the people at, uh, Shippensburg, so I've asked them, uh, our, uh, legal counsel to address what he had to do to get them to see the light.
Well, really briefly, Mark Brookshue pushed hard to get, to get to a compromise, we kept working at it, and if you remember, the first deal was, if they didn't like the way they were, we were maintaining it, or what we were doing with it, they would direct us to do it. If we didn't agree, they would go to court, we, we would agree that they get a court order and we spend whatever they said we had to spend. Um, and, and I just said, we can't agree to that, it's just, it's a blank check and there's no way, it's irresponsible to the people that you represent. So we kept hammering away, and we came up with the idea, Mark and I did, of, um, limiting our exposure to just the grant money we get. So basically, if we fall behind in what they feel is required to meet the federal standards, all they can do is request their grant money back. So that was the compromise that finally got it done, it just took a long time. They were very nice people, very committed to helping us, the problem is, the bad language is all over the place in other agreements, and we just wouldn't agree to it. So we got a compromise, and it's, it's a good thing.
Okay, thank you. Uh, any other questions for Gary? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Motion carried. The, uh, Michigan, uh, Lighthouse Assistance Program Grant Application, we can now make it.
I move that this be, uh, forwarded to the full board for final action.
Support.
Moved and supported by Commissioner Greata, any discussion about that? Was there a match with that? I forgot.
It was matched by twenty thousand four hundred and fifty-five dollars donated by the Friends of Fort Grashit.
Yeah, I, 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 I thought I read across that, and I wanted to, uh, to mention that, uh, with, uh, the Friends of the Lighthouse and, uh, the, uh, Sand Fest, I think they raised fifty-three thousand dollars, and now they're using that money to assist us in getting grants, uh, to, uh, refurbish, uh, many of the facilities out there. And so if you haven't been to the Lighthouse and, uh, had a chance to see all of the work that's been done out there, uh, in the last two or three years, uh, you're definitely in for a treat. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Motion carried. Uh, the extension of the DPW Leachate Pretreatment Contract.
I'll move that this be forwarded to the full board for final action.
Support.
Supported by Commissioner Riley. Uh, any discussion or questions regarding that? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Motion carried. Um, the Resolution 14.47 of 2014, County at Large Drain Request?
I'll move that be forwarded to the board for full action, final action.
Support.
Okay, um, he's asking for five hundred and seventeen thousand?
Thirty-seven. Pardon? Five, five thirty-seven?
Five hundred and thirty-seven thousand.
I think we had budgeted five hundred thousand.
I think we had budgeted five hundred thousand, so.
Well, I don't know how familiar you guys are with County at Drain at Large Program, but they have X amount of work that is obviously on the books, and the county has to pay its, um, portion of the benefit to the drains, so sometimes that, that's kind of a moving target, sometimes on that particular number. I remember, uh, Howard, myself, and my former predecessor, when, um, Bob Wiley first took over, we didn't really understand the County at Large, and we went from a hundred and fifty thousand to three hundred thousand, remember? We had been set, I went, Bob, and Bob said, hey, I don't need to clean any ditches. After he explained everything to him, we gave him four hundred thousand, because it was always, you know, it was always one thing that I think the residents were always screaming about, as far as the, the ditching not getting cleaned, and then we've been in the five hundred thousand, uh, dollar category, um, now, and, and a lot of times too, with this, dollars, let's say if you even want to double that amount of money, and Dave Gill, best of this, on the, on the town, townships level, the townships only have the ability to make so much of the match, a lot of times too, so it's kind of, um, you know, the townships need to work with the Drain Commission Office, just.
Yeah, and that Bob Wiley has worked great with the townships and worked for the budgeting, and I believe Bob's done a fantastic job as far as the maintenance, uh, since he's taken off as Drain Commissioner, and working with the townships, he works within their budgets too, because every township has a line item on their budget to be able to expend on the, uh, drain, and above and beyond what the, uh, individuals that have the drains going through their property, so he does work very well with the townships.
Any other discussion or points? Just to comment on my part, uh, when, when I joined this board twelve years ago, uh, I saw photos that were being presented, Commissioner Riley probably remembers this, that, uh, there's this huge tree growing out in the middle of the drain, you knew it hadn't been cleaned in fifty years. And, uh, so when problems like flooding develop and that sort of thing, and then when you consider the fact that we have probably just shy of a thousand miles of, of drains in the county, uh, it's, it's a big job. But anyway, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Motion carried. Okay, the Blue Water Area Transit, and I see Jim here, uh, that someone would make a motion?
I'll make a motion, we send it on to the full board.
Support.
Okay, Jim, did you want to comment on this? Oh, okay.
I got a question for you, the Transit Center, you know, unrelated to this, but it's gotta get you on TV. Uh, just a little update on the Transit Center, um, where you guys are at in that process?
Well, we're still trying to get some lower bids for plugging the deep water wells, but we still expect to have that done before spring and, and expect to break ground on the project in the spring.
Okay.
How many deep water wells?
There's, there's two on, on the site.
What's the diameter of the well?
Pardon me?
What, what diameter?
I don't know, it's, it's unclear still.
Oh, okay.
Or how deep either, we don't know, so.
Yeah, oh, okay, I, I was just curious, my irrigation well is twenty-four inches in diameter, so, and they can get pretty big.
Size matters.
Okay, that's huge. Okay, um, any other questions? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Motion carried. The Landfill Residential Waste Rate Increase Recommendation.
I'll make a motion to send it to the full board.
Any other, uh, do we have a second? Supported by Commissioner Tomlin. Any discussion? Commissioner Rushing?
Just a little, we've been discussing this for a long time, it's been since 1899 since we've had a rate increase, but the rate increase that's being recommended would only result in a fifty cents per month increase per residents throughout St. Clair County.
Yeah, I'll chime in, and we've, I've spent a lot of time, um, on the landfill, probably three different occasions, have had township supervisors out, um, cities, just to educate them on the whole landfill thing, tipping fee, so on and so forth, so I think, um, being out in forefront, you know, with this, um, and, and the understanding that they had of it, it's, it's been, you know, it's been well received, so.
Jeff, I could ask you, could you give them the rundown as far as Contra Ville and Marysville, the savings benefits they have in, uh, working with the county?
Uh, well, Contra Ville was the first township that, that went along with the county as far as the bidding process, and that was roughly a hundred and seventy thousand dollar contract, they, uh, saw about a seventeen thousand dollar savings.
They saw about a $17,000 savings. City of Marysville, their renewal, they're somewhere in the $600,000 range as far as their yearly trash collection. And they saw, you know, $50,000, $60,000 in that ballpark savings by working with the county to assist that. So, we've been continuing to tell the municipalities and the townships about the county's willingness to assist and be quite frank, some of them don't take us up on it. Why they don't is beyond me because we do handle everything from A to Z on the bidding piece of it. And, but I do give credit to those two.
That's the reason I bring that up is because if certain communities do want to partner with the county, this 50 cents a month actually might be a reduction because the individuals will see savings in each township and municipality.
Even with the increases in these two particular cases, it's still substantial savings to them percentage-wise, so.
By doing what I brought up is that you're actually contracting, so the townships or municipalities are contracting with the county and the waste haulers will only be the waste haulers. They're not doing a cost analysis of their own cost as far as the tonnage going in and everything. So, they'd be, each township would be contracting with the county and it kind of limits the middle.
Yeah, and I got to give Jim Logston, our landfill consultant, a lot of credit for bringing that before us. You know, we brought Jim on to help us with our landfill to look at everything operationally. And he was the one that essentially put that in place, so that was, you know, it was good stuff. I know the city of Marysville, Tom, you know, they're very happy.
Very, yes.
Okay, any other questions or discussion? Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay, motion carried. The Aeronautics Advisory Board Reappointments.
I'll make a motion that we send on to the full board, the appointment of Robert Bennett and Dave Corby.
Do we have a second?
Support.
Okay, it's been moved and supported and discussion. Got some good people there. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay, motion carried. We have the Smith Creek Landfill Activities Report. I would entertain a motion that we receive and file.
So, moved.
Support.
It's been moved and supported. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Next is the, any other environmental public works matters? Seeing none, we'll move on to information only. We have the Park and Rec Financial Report in it. Berlin Township Resolution Regarding the Pipeline, the EPA Comment Period for the Underground Injection Permit from Deep Blue LLC, and the Meta Certification for the Air Industrial Park.
Make a motion to receive and file the information only items A through D.
Support.
Supported by Commissioner Riley. Motion made by Commissioner Greathop. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Entertainer motion, receive and file.
Moved. Support.
Been moved and supported. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay.
Motion recessed.
Motion recessed.
Support.
All in favor?
Aye.
We are adjourned.
I'll do so much, Carol.
This time, I'd like to call the Ways and Means Committee to order.
You got it.
We have a roll call, please.
Commissioner Smasco?
Here.
Commissioner Tomian?
Here.
Commissioner Heidemann?
Here.
Commissioner Bone?
Here.
Commissioner O'Reilly?
Here.
Commissioner Greathop?
Here.
Commissioner Rushing?
Here.
Okay, so we have an addition.
This time, I would make a motion that Intervention Security or Center Security System be added to the agenda as Item 7i.
Have a second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Do I need a motion to accept the agenda as presented now?
I would so move.
Support.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passed. Moving on to three, citizens to be heard, to be heard. Do we have any citizens wishing to be heard? Seeing none, we'll move on. Do we have any updates? Seeing none, conceptual initiatives, do we have any? We have none. We will move on to old business. We have no old business, so we'll move on to 7A, Blue Cross Blue Shield Schedule A Renewal.
Make a motion, we send it to the full board.
We have support.
Support.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passed. 7B, RISA Payroll Services Agreement Extension.
Make a motion, we send it to the full board.
Have a second.
Support.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
We have any opposed? Motion passed. 7C, Resolution 1444, the Collective Barden Agreement Extension for the Corrections Command Officer, COAM.
I'll move this be forwarded to the full board for final action.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passed. Move on to 7D, 2015 Pension and Retiree Healthcare Contribution. I have a motion to send this to the full board.
So moved.
We have support.
Support.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
I just want to chime in on a couple of things here, this pension and healthcare. The Nyhurt Day came in and the Exuero report was presented. I think we're about 86% on the pension piece and we're somewhere in the 26% to 28% on the healthcare piece. If you remember, four years ago, when we got the report on the healthcare portion of it, it was a five to seven-year kind of thing and we were out of money. So, we did make some changes. You know, I think right now, we're looking at a 15 to 17-year kind of window. Obviously, it's going to be more changes, more things we're going to have to address down, you know, down the road. I am going to go talk to the retirees at their luncheon at Christmas time just to give them a little update on some of that information, so.
When you do, could you find out how the Blue Cross Blue Shield is working out advantage programs for them? What day is that luncheon?
I'd have to get back with Howard on it.
Okay.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion passed. Okay, we'll move on to 7E. And I see we have Mr. Lindley here. If you would please address the board.
Good evening. I have submitted a proposal to add a full-time attorney position within my office. Just a little background, I'm asking for final action on this today. My, I've talked to Kerry and we sat down and worked through my budget to see if it fits within my 2014 budget, which it does, without any additional funding coming from the general fund. I have a part-time position within my office, attorney that's quit or that has moved on in the last two weeks. I have an employee who's on long-term disability, who's been on long-term disability for most of 2014 and 2013, and there isn't really a projection when he's going to be back. And so, we kind of doctored my budget around a little bit, eliminated the part-time position for 2014, eliminated two intern positions that I have, moved over a contract line item that provides for attorneys who are on maternity leave or attorneys when we have a spot where you can hire in somebody contract short-term to fill in those holes, which really doesn't work very well for my office due to the relationship with cases and their longevity. And we were able to find the funding within my budget to cover that position. So, I'm asking the board, allow me to change my manning table to add for that position with the understanding that it would not be a budget increase of any kind.
Stephen?
Yes, Tom?
Mike, you said you wanted final action tonight, is that what you said?
Well, I would like it to be final action tonight because it's kind of critical mass as far as employees in my office right now with two out. Also, bar results come out this week, so there'll be a new crop of attorneys out there that I can recruit and I'd hope to find the right person during that time period. So, I'd like to interview during November and December with a start date being January 1st.
I'd make that motion.
Do we have any other questions for Mike first?
Is it really necessary? I hate doing things for final action, Mike, you know. Is it really that urgent that you would make it a final action request? It'd be nice, but could it wait a couple of weeks and put it on full boards where people have an opportunity if they want to come in and talk about it?
Well, urgency for me or urgency for you?
From you, you're the head.
It is urgent for us. I mean, and you're in our office every day, Steve. You know that with Maureen out, my part-time person's gone, so I don't have that backfill person. I got Tim Morris, who's been out for an extended period of time, and I don't have interns around to fill in spots. It gets pretty difficult to cover all the quarters. And I understand that board's position, you would want to take time to look at a decision like this, but it's really an internal decision in our office, how to man the courts. And if it's not a budget increase, I'd hope that the court or that the board would trust that I'll stay within my budget and I have, so.
I would second the...
Hasn't made the motion yet.
I think he did.
Yeah, he did.
I would second it for final action.
Okay, we have a second. More questions?
One question for Bill. Is this recommended by administration or any objection by administration?
No objections to it. We've looked at it, all the numbers work as prosecutor indicated, worked very closely with Kerry. She has assured me that the funds are there within his budget, so no financial impact.
Thank you.
I just have one thing. I want to stress that same thing like our sheriff is here and the other experts that we've had come here tonight. And you're our expert in prosecuting attorney's office. We've got to rely on your expertise. There's no budget. Dollars have been changing. You can work within your department, so.
And I just have, Kerry's always so easy to work with and is always willing to sit down with us and talk to us about where our budget is and where we can go. If I didn't have her help, I may have gone over budget in the past, but she keeps a pretty tight rate on us.
You have any other questions?
I kind of miss the days of Mr. Lindley yelling and screaming at us.
You haven't said no yet.
I still have it in me.
Your three minutes are up. If there's no further questions, could I have, do we need a roll call on this?
You do. You do.
Is it budget, within his budget? Does it establish?
Commissioner Smasco?
Yes.
Commissioner Tomian?
Yes.
Commissioner Heidemann?
Yes.
Commissioner Bone?
Yes.
Commissioner O'Reilly?
Yes.
Commissioner Greathop?
Yes.
Commissioner Rushing?
Yes. Okay, we'll move on to 7F, Resolution 1448, adopting the 1820 Cost Share Model.
Make a motion, we send it on to the full board.
We have a second.
Support.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion passed. Moving on to 7G, Return of Funds to Park and Rec Commission and the Library Board of Trustees in Regards to the 318 Grand River Avenue Building.
I would move to return the funds to the Parks and Rec Commission and Library Board.
Support.
Any discussion? Do we need a roll call on this?
No, it's going to the full boards.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion passed. Okay, 7H, Administrator Controller Employment Agreement Renewal.
Make a motion, this goes to the full board.
Support.
Any discussion? All in favor?
I was just going to have Carl chime in because I kind of put Carl task at hand for him. As many of you know, Carl does this in his outside life with the Michigan Municipal League and he's been working very closely with Bill. I know a couple of us have been in meetings to discuss it and Carl, I appreciate your work on it.
Well, we're very close and Gary and I are working on finalizing the wording. Gary, you want to add anything to that?
No, there were just a couple nebulous areas, whatever, that actually got resolved this afternoon. It was too late to get the revised one here, but you'll have it in two weeks, so it's done.
Howard, I would just like to thank Administrator Kaufman for having patience with us. This was supposed to have been done, what, four months ago? I certainly am embarrassed that it's taking this long, but I understand what you did and was quite impressed with your input into that and working with Bill to basically personalize it and make it effective for discounting.
Well, we've been fortunate to have Mr. Kaufman, that's been said numerous times, but also we're fortunate to have Carl's expertise to get this forward and get a revised contract and update it to date 2014.
Yep.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion passed. Hey, at this time, do we have any other Ways and Means Matters?
Aye.
Item I, correct. Item I, the Intervention Center Security System.
Good evening and thank you for putting this on as a condition. A little history, if you remember back when the Intervention Center was first built, the security, video security system they put in there was modern for the day, if you will, but not that modern, if that makes sense. And essentially, what has happened now is that this is a dying entity, if you will. We get to the point now where our current DVR system and some of the components therein that EO, our current contractors, had to go out on eBay to find parts for it. That's how archaic the system is. We have problems in retaining some of the videos. We have problems in even getting some of the videos. And I know Gary, with your office and a couple of things that we've looked at of recent, there's just holes missing, which puts, you know, first and foremost, staff in danger, their safety, the inmates, and also the general public, because you remember, we've got cameras throughout the building, the parking lot and so forth. It's all part of this system. So, the recording end of it is basically dead. We put out an RFP, we had four Tiffany, I'm trying to remember. We had four companies that went in there. We had things from $600 to some odd $1,000 down to the individuals that we picked, which is the Conti Corporation. Currently have video recording equipment, a system in the courthouse that works well and they have a bid there. Their bid that they came in was 175 and change, $1,000, that is. We've added to it part of the agreement and you'll see in the memo that I put forward, there's really two parts to this. One, we're looking for the system to replace what we have that's dying, if not dead in some areas. And then, we talk about a service contract. So, contract for the new equipment installation, everything is 175,000, a little extra. The amount that we're asking for, 210, takes a contingency. Instead of the usual service contract that we're doing now with EO, which is a $40,000 a year service agreement, maintenance agreement, we took our last two service, year service calls and compared apples to apples, because Conti has offered us, should back up, Conti has offered or proposed to do the service agreement on an as-needed basis, per item, parts, labor, maintenance. They gave us the scale, we looked at it, we gave, supplied with Tiffany, the last two years were the servicing calls. She weighted out apples to apples, where we spent $40,000 on service contract, we would have spent between $11,000 and $12,000 on service agreement there. And what the service agreement does is not only the new equipment, but it'll also pick up our maintenance for our doors and locks and so forth throughout the jail. So, it allows one to get the new equipment that's necessary in order to keep the safety and the control of staff, inmates, and the public, but it will improve our system greatly. It will also, as a side note, create a lot of more man-hours, usable man-hours for my supervisors, who spend probably two hours a day going through our current system because it is not user-friendly. With the dashboard on this, they can go in, get out, get what they need and move forward with that. So, that's kind of a nutshell. So, what I've come for you to ask for is the amount of 210, but if I remember right, before I go too far with that, Tiffany and I, we did have a conference call with Conti when we asked them about this figure they threw at us for the onsite equipment, the parts and so forth. They said they highballed it. So, we just factored that in above the 175 to make our 110 or 210. We actually believe and Conti believes that it'll probably be a lower figure than that in terms of what we have to keep on hand in order to keep the system, to make the service calls as needed. I missed anything, Tiff? And you're more the technical end of it, so. And you're more the, the technical end of it, so. All right, thank you. I did misspoke. The 210 includes the equipment being put in, and we're replacing two pods with the cameras. There's 268 cameras throughout the jail system and the administrative buildings. It's very incumbent, or encompasses a whole lot. 175 is for the video system. The extra 30 is for the cameras for the two pods. The service agreement, going back to that, is $40,000 now. We're going to save money in terms of that moving forward each year. So we're going to realize roughly at 25 to, probably save $25,000 savings in maintenance fee a year.
On the service end of it, just because I own a company, I know what I need to make an hourly rate for my employees or for my product. What is the current hourly rate, and what are you forecasting for an hourly rate? Because the hours, you're saying it's $11,000 from a $40,000 contract. The total number of hours you can come with the hourly rate that they were actually doing, and it's Conti comparable to what you're...
Oh, since I did the numbers, I'll answer that. What, our current contract is a fixed rate of 47,000 a year, and the new contract is just billed as incurred when, when they do the work. And the hourly rate, I don't have it, do you have it in front of you? I didn't bring the contract with me, but I want to say it was 95 an hour, and I calculated the numbers on an overtime rate, because if we call them after-hours, it would be time and a half. So I actually took the hours we did in the past two years and added an additional 15 or 20 hours to that number, because we had an average over the past two years, and I calculated at that time and a half rate and came up to $11,000. So it was kind of a very conservative figure, but it was, you know, the 95 an hour, time and a half rate, so whatever that was, 145.
Tom, what's the timeframe on installation of this, et cetera?
Well, um, for the contract, the immediate issue is we need, our current contract, our current service contract expires at the end of this month. So we're coming to you tonight because we need to make a decision going forward and get a new service contract in place. If we're going to move to Conti, we want to move our service contract as well. So our intention is to award the, the new system to them as well as a service contract. The service contract would go into effect, you know, at the end of the month here, after you approve it at the full board meeting, and the actual installation of the system will be done as we are able to, as time allows. We've discussed with Conti, what does that look like? Because obviously, it's going to be an interruption to, you know, a 24/7 hour operation, but they're going to work in sections, and they'll work according to our schedule. So we haven't really nailed down exactly when everything would be complete, but it'll be based on what the jail needs.
Can I add one thing?
Yes.
The, we've had notice of six, probably six lawsuits, two of which were death cases, one of which the fighter firm had. And we downloaded the video, they came and looked at it, and they just passed. They didn't even file the lawsuits. And the, I can guarantee you, if we didn't have the video, they would have filed the lawsuits, because at that point, it's anybody's guess. And it literally, those, that system saved the county hundreds and hundreds of thousands of dollars. The last one we did, we couldn't get it to play. We had a hell of a time, or, I'm sorry, I can't swear in TV, but I, we had a heck of a time getting it to run. And I don't know, somebody finally, maybe it was Tiffany or one of your people figured it out. We had a, and they looked at it, and they took it on. So it's really valuable stuff, because the people in the jail are doing their job the right way. But if you don't have proof of it, anybody can say anything, and you don't know what's going to happen.
I do have one, just for contracting, and you chime in on this also. Because if I got your figures correctly, I'm going to guess there was 100 hours used for maintenance in the previous. If you're on 100 dollars an hour, that's 10 grand.
I calculated about 75, yep.
Okay. Potentially, because you're putting them in control of the maintenance and the hours needed, could we get a, would it be reasonable to have a top-dollar amount? Because I don't want this $10,000 bill to turn into a $40,000 bill. I don't know if you could have that in the contract or even a consideration?
To exceed that?
Not to exceed. We discussed that.
I was just going to make a comment on security systems. I own three of them, and they get sloppy. Cameras go, hard drives fail, gotta, you manage to try to get parts for those things, you know. And mine's not even the sensitivity of what these guys deal with. So you talk about being old, it's a nine-year, 10-year system, you know. So I mean, that technology definitely changes on that stuff.
Right, do we have any more questions? Do I have a motion yet?
I beg most to the full board.
Support. Second. Any other discussion?
Yes. If I could, Commissioner, too, also to...
Yeah.
Yeah, just want to appreciate Gary's comments here on, on the video, and how important it is for the staff and the inmates. Kind of piggyback on that, too. As you all are aware, we do house US Marshals, and we do house the immigration, custom enforcement detainees. On a side note, just an FYI, if you will, we just completed today our second ICE inspection for the past eight weeks, right? Yeah, eight weeks. Back last week, August, we went through our first one, which is an annual. I might note that it was the first time for us to go through a new set of standards. We have been held to the 2003 National Detention Standards, which, you know, for a visual, is held here, and is higher than even the USA or the, I should say, the American Correctional Association Accreditation Standards. It holds higher. So we were held to those for the past number of years. This year, under, because of our new ICE contract, we had to be held to the 2008 PBNDs, or Performance-Based National Detention Standards. That took the standards from here to about here. We got through that in August. Probably more importantly, more impressively than that, is this afternoon we went through an out briefing. ICE goes out and hires private contractors, come in and do that standards, and there's, there's, gosh, over 120 standards. It's about a 63-page document, both sides, that they go through with all the components to each of these standards. If you fail a mandatory primary one, they back the buses up the next day, and they pull your inmates out, your detainees out, because you've had a gross violation. We passed that in August. This last one that we just passed over the past three days was an internal one through their ODO, Office of Detention Oversight. To put it plain and simple, it's ICE's more or less internal investigative unit, or in the police sense it would be IA. They come in with another inspection team, and they look at the previous stuff, plus they look at the ICE operation and the area field office. And we were able to get past that. So it's kind of, it's kind of like going from a general physical to a more invasive test and examination, if you will. And we were able to get through that. We'll fly colors from the outbreak today. Further note, get back to where these standards set. There's roughly 250 what they call IGSA's out there, in other words, intergovernmental agreement, add, don't hold me to the, to the acronym, but 250 facilities out there privately contracted by the government to hold their federal inmates and detainees were one of those. There's only 19 in this nation that now hold the 2008 PBNDs standard certification. We're being one of them. We're the only one in the area with the Detroit office that covers. We're the first and only one to go through. So I thought I'd throw that out for general knowledge.
Congratulations on that consideration.
Thank you.
Good job.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion passed. Okay, now we'll move on to number eight. Are there any other Ways and Means Matters at this time? Seeing none, move on to nine information. Only we have four items on that.
I would make a motion that we receive and file items 9A through 9D.
Support.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion passed. Okay, on 10, receive and file packets.
So moved.
Have a second?
Yes, sir.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passed.
Motion to recess.
Have a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passed.
We are done.